Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of October 7th, 2021. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
Flagging to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2021 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, posted on the township's website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. Further notice has been provided to the saying that as of July 1st of this year, the remainder of the 2021 Planning Board meetings will be held in person here at the Peter J. Biondi Building. Live virtual participation will no longer be available. Again, application documents have been made available on the township's website through their civil clerk portal. Complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meetings notice. May I have a roll call of both board members and township professionals?
Mr. Scobal, Mr. Wagner, Peason, Deputy Mayor Delfor, Vice Chair Julian, our absolute enemy.
Here.
Mr. Chigarelli.
Here.
Mr. Hessack.
Here.
Mr. Sanamita.
Here.
Mayor Lepani.
Yes.
Chair Fachi.
Here.
Mr. Maskey.
Here.
Euro.
Here.
Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Pass.
And Mike, you're here. Okay, we do not have any consideration of meeting minutes nor resolutions. David, we have planning board business regarding October 28th?
Yes, it's just a scheduling note. That's a regularly scheduled business meeting, but we do have a subdivision application scheduled for that night.
Okay, do we need to take any actions?
No.
Nope. Okay. Thank you. Next is business from the floor for matters not on the agenda. So if there's anyone that would like to comment to the board on any matters that are not on this evening's agenda, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and spell your last name.
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. Also Hillsborough Township property owner, Block 86, Lot 3, 2155, Camplain Road. Manville and Hillsborough were devastatingly flooded during this tropical storm, Ida. There's so much building going on that it's beyond belief. I'm the owner of a property that joins the so-called Sherman Tract, which is Block 86, Lot 21, and that property requires permits for the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Division of Land Use Regulation. And I have been asking and asking in numerous departments, in the zoning and planning department, and the engineering department, and the construction department, for copies of the permits. And to this date, I have not gotten them. On this past Tuesday, October 5th, I had gone personally to the Hillsborough Township Engineering Department, and I was told that the permits were emailed to me. I said, "Well, then, can you give me them?" Because I never got them. So I was given something like 48 pages. When I brought it home and looked at it, the cover page says permit, and it's for Block 86, Lot 21. But then, when you, but there's, at the bottom, it's supposed to be received and/or recorded by county clerk and some kind of documentation, which there isn't. On the second page, it's showing permanent disturbance, 0.005 acres, 0.023. This, well, tiny, tiny pieces of property, where this property is 62 acres or more. The other 46 pages that I, 41 pages that I received are in regard to Block 143, Lot 12.01, for a project called Heritage Business Campus. And DNR Canal Commission documents and numerous other documents regarding Block 143, Lot 12.01 are included with this whole packet that I was told were the permits for Block 86, Lot 21, the so-called Sherman Tract. So right now, there are no permits. No one is providing permits. That property is in violation of the Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act because there are no permits. It also requires a permit for flood hazard area. And that has not been provided, not even on this, this piece of paper that I got that is really worthless because it has no, no signature, no, no recording, no anything. So that property is being cleared, and there's no permits. Also, supposedly, the zone was changed for that property, yet there's no ordinance showing that that property, and that property is zoned I-1 light industrial. There's no, no ordinance. There's no filing of an ordinance with the Somerset County Planning Board. So how is that project going forward? I've been repeatedly asking. I asked at the township committee meetings. I was told, submit an OPR, go to the department. I've done that. I've done that according to what I was told that I need to do. And to this date, there is, there are no, there are no permits. And when the clearing of the property started, one of the, one of the front lots that faces onto Camplain Road had a path being cleared through it. That property was not a part of that development. So there's a lot of stuff that's going on. Now, that property is, one-third of it is wetlands. There's a stream that goes through it. It's bordered by the Royce Brook. There's the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission Conservation Eastman on that property. That property is environmentally sensitive, ecologically important, and, and bad stuff is going on. Now, Manville got flooded really bad. I don't know if the sewers are going to be hooked up to Manville sewers from this property. And also, there's, I had an article, I forgot to bring it. There's like 400-something homes going to be built on the Manville border. And that's a project by M&amp;M Realty Partners, and they're supposedly under the affordable housing mandate. Well, there isn't going to be any affordable housing there. And apparently, they're going to be putting more housing on this Block 86, Lot 21. So all of this needs to be, this needs to be explained, what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public or matters not on this evening's agenda? Okay, seeing none. We do not have any considerable, oh, sorry.
Good evening. Mary Ann Sawade, 142 Johansson. I am greatly concerned about the proposed warehouse on Harvard Way. The warehouse building itself will make impervious two and a half acres of land and does not include the paved parking lot. I attended the environmental commission meeting a few weeks ago regarding the proposed warehouse. When we asked what the building would be used for, the owner had said he wasn't sure and thought he would rent it out. He said there would be about 12 bays for trucks to load and unload. And as far as I know, there has not been a planning board meeting date scheduled yet. Is that correct for that?
Correct.
We do ask that this application be denied when it comes before the board. The plans have the stormwater being directed to a detention basin that exists to the rear of the south end of Johansson Avenue. The stormwater drainage system, as you are aware, is not currently able to handle that runoff, as was evident during Hurricane Ida, and it has collapsed. In addition, there is no community need for this building at all. The trucks would create air and noise pollution for the residents adjacent to the property and violate their private right to enjoyment of their homes and their yards. Due to the massive flooding my neighborhood endured from Hurricane Ida, we ask that all development in this environmentally sensitive area be denied, or at the very least, no actual building take place until the stormwater system is evaluated and mitigated. If these areas are to be developed, then the new mitigated drainage system must overaccommodate for all of this additional stormwater runoff. As you know, development after development has been allowed to tie into this drainage system over the years, which has caused more and more flooding to my neighborhood. The stormwater system was installed in 1972 and was designed to meet the needs of that time. It has been 50 years since it was installed, and more developments are allowed to tie into the system. The Courtyards complex, Harvard Way, where they then put in the detention basin, in 1988, with 206 was widened by 20 feet. St. Mary's on Brooks Boulevard was built and directed their drainage towards the wetlands. And then Stellar Academy was built and directed their drainage towards the pipe towards my neighborhood. I was made aware of a letter received by the township with photos of the current condition of the detention basin and drainage system on Block 58, directly adjacent to Johansson Avenue, after Hurricane Ida. The photos show that the detention basin is collapsed and likely happened during the Ida due to the lack of maintenance and regular inspection of the detention basin and the stormwater drainage system. This neglect led to the massive flooding in my neighborhood very early during Hurricane Ida, coming from the south end corner of Johansson Avenue, where the basin is. Subsequently, a letter from the Township Engineering Department was sent to the owner of the property, named Middlesex Farms, where the detention basin is located, who owns a warehouse office building on the site on Harvard Way. The letter informed him of the situation, and he was told to correct at ACP and had 10 days to respond. Are they responsible, Middlesex Farms, for that detention basin?
May I point out to the board that if there is an application pending, it is not
before this board, and I would recommend the board take, make no comments regarding any application that may be coming that has not yet reached this board, nor comment on any application that may be pending before either the Environmental Commission or the Planning Department.
Has there been a response from him?
David?
You would have to ask the engineer in question.
Okay. So you also wouldn't know if the original agreement, when the property was built in 1986, if there was a stipulation about the maintenance and schedule for inspections of that detention basin?
Not open.
Not open. Okay. I read in the Hillsborough Township newsletter that Penoni will be inspecting the stormwater systems in the township over the next two to three months. Have they inspected the failed system behind Johansson Avenue yet?
Is that for engineering?
They're in the process.
Okay. I just wanted to say, hopefully, this system can be fixed as soon as possible because we are very vulnerable to any minor storm, even at this point. There's nowhere for that order to go. So we're fearful that we're going to get another, anything, any kind of storm would really, you know, flood us out again quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, Mayor, board members.
Name and record.
Richard Onderko, 325 North Main Street, Borough of Manville, the current mayor. Tonight, I'm here to share some information with the board members. I don't know if anyone saw this article. It's titled, "Deadly destructive flooding demands we take bold action now." And it's an opinion piece by a friend of mine. I don't have many friends, but I do have a friend in Jim Waltman. He's the executive director of the Watershed Institute. He was recently in my town, and we walked our streets, and he couldn't believe what he saw. So one of the points in his article is very important for the people of Hillsborough. It says, "First, we must strengthen protections against development near streams, rivers, and coastlines. As the saying goes, when you are in a hole, stop digging. Allow more homes and businesses to be built near bodies of water will lead to more costly flood, costly damage from flooding. State and local policymakers must strengthen protections against building near water." Now, a few years ago, I came before the mayor and committee, and I spoke, and I said, "Manville's drowning." I got in a lot of political hot water for that comment, but I spoke the truth. And I won reelection. So the people liked what I had to say. So I spoke out against the development that went in on Falcon Road. Massive amount of development, all forest trees. All that water, you know where it ends up, right? Into Royce Brook, on my main street, into Lost Valley. Over 80 businesses were flooded on my main street. Borough Hall got wiped out. Everyone says it's climate change. Climate change definitely has an effect, but I also think it has to do with overdevelopment. The amount of impervious surface, the roofs, the asphalt heat up our atmosphere. I don't know what the solution is, but if you read Jim Waltman's article, he's right on point. Not only that, he also says that we have to go back and fix, retrofit, the developments that went in over the decades that have no stormwater management. So we need green infrastructure, which Dr. Abrupt is big on. We need green infrastructure. We need money to do this, but we also need, now, I want to partner with Hillsborough. We also need a flood control project on the Royce Brook because it becomes the Royce River. It's out of control. What it did to the American Legion is sad. Our veterans, it tore up their parking lot. It's gone. So, you know, there's going to be infrastructure money available from our government. I hope that I could leave these articles with you. There's a few copies here. Please read it. I think it's on point. And like I said, Jim Waltman's a friend of mine. I think the Watershed Institute, we're on the, we're on the verge of the Stony Brook Millstone Watershed. Hopefully, we could get our act together and take bold action. Okay, we got to stop developing near water sources. Chairman, can I approach and just give you these?
Sure. Any other problem?
Just actually, two waters.
Okay. So, but just, just to add into there quickly is, I think one of the things that should be added into Mr. Waltman's initiative there is to reach to our legislature because the development you were talking about was a direct impact from affordable housing, which is a, to me, is the driver of overdevelopment in this state going on. And unfortunately, we have an inactive legislature that refuses to take the bold actions that you talk about and got into the vob where the Supreme Court has gotten involved and has now taken over planning, which, yes, we all know, that's a disaster to let the courts get involved. And I think what you're going to see coming up next is a prime example of what happens when courts get involved. So.
My only concern is, I always ask the question, "Why this location?" And I can't get an answer. It's all on our border. Have a good evening. I'll be listening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor.
Comments on items not on this evening's agenda? Okay, seeing none. We are going to move on to a public hearing of Campus Associates LLC, otherwise known as Weiss, file number 20-PB-13-MSP. Not going to get into the details of it because I think everyone has heard that enough, but just going to note that this application was remanded for the order to enforce Legions Rights issued June 7th, 2021 with notice, and had been adjourned from the September 23rd meeting of this year, and it was, again, with renotice. And Mr. Bernstein, I mean, I'm going to ask you because this is one of the most unique sessions I've probably ever been in in nearly 20 years, being involved either on the governing body or on the planning board. So we are in somewhat uncharted waters, and we're going to let you captain the ship a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few items for the record, just so that we can complete. As Mr. Lombardozzi indicated, there are several board members missing this evening. I want to indicate for the record that two of them, Mr. Scobal and Mr. Wagner, have been recused throughout this process. Mr. Peason is out of town and unavailable. Mr. Julian wanted to come, but he's sick, so we told him, considering everything, he should stay home. And therefore, he is home, thankfully not with COVID. And my understanding is that Mr. Delkor is trying to get here, but he is currently in a business situation, hopes to get here. So that's the first item for the record. As the chair indicated, this matter has been remanded back from Judge Shanahan regarding an application made by campus associates for a motion to enforce Legions Rights, which they were successful on, of which the governing body took the appropriate action required. And I would like to read for the record, if you would allow me, Mr. Chairman.
Please do.
The eight provisions of his honor's consent order relative to the proceedings that are being held tonight. On remand, the township planning board shall continue the hearing. Sorry. On remand, the township planning board shall continue the hearing on the campus application based on the records, on the record in the prior hearings supplemented as provided in this consent order. Two, the board shall hear the application at its next regularly scheduled meeting on September 2nd, 2021. The board is aware why that didn't happen. The notice issue became an issue for the September 23rd meeting, and that is why we are here this evening. Campus shall provide public notice of the continuation of the hearing in accordance with the municipal land use law, which occurred. All evidence and professional and/or public testimony previously heard before the board will be on the record for the board's consideration. The public will be advised of the court's decision regarding the 150-foot buffer, which the court rejected, the township's argument that the 150-foot buffer applied, and the downstream drainage study, which the court indicated this board could not impose as a condition of any of the application. The remand hearing, which is what we're here for this evening, shall be limited to public comment on the overall project and shall be completed at tonight's hearing, and then the hearing will be closed. At the conclusion of the public portion of the hearing, the board shall take appropriate action to approve the campus application. The board shall adopt a memorializing resolution at the same hearing, which will not occur, Mr. Paula Castro and I, if that occurs, will have to address that accordingly. He has the draft resolution from previous or soon thereafter as possible, and in any event within the time limit set forth in the municipal land use law as cited in his honor's decision in his consent order. Ostensibly, Your Honor, leaving aside, and this is coming from a lawyer, leaving aside the legal mumbo jumbo, what we, where we are this evening is ostensibly where we would be with any application. Once the application has been completed, the applicant has produced his or her testimony of the professionals, the residents and the board have had an opportunity to examine and cross-examine those individuals, and it is now the public's opportunity to comment on the overall application that is before the board. There is no other evidence before this board other than what has been previously provided. There is no other record in terms of testimony of the individuals that Mr. Paula Castro on behalf of his client introduced, and/or the testimony or the comments made by Mr. Maskey, Mr. Euro, and others. This includes all the comments, statements, and materials provided by the public during the hearings, but ostensibly where we are is, we are at summation. There will be no further examination of any witnesses. There will be no examination of the board's professionals. There will be no examination of the board. The public will have the right to come up and comment on the application. The matter will then be concluded, and the board will then have to deliberate as to what action it intends to take. The board is well aware of his honor's decision of June the 7th, and I assume we will be discussing that further once this testimony is concluded, but those are ostensibly the ground rules. I understand members of the public may want to try to expand on them. We'll have to deal with it accordingly. My counsel here will have his own comments at the appropriate times, or not, and we will deal with it. But I want everybody to understand that there is no more testimony. It is comments, it is feelings or whatever, but there will be no more testimony and no more evidence.
And Eric, that would be no questioning of?
No more questioning, no more asking. People can ask rhetorical questions, but they're not going to get answers. That's the remand from his honor.
Okay. Counselor, any comments before?
Nothing to ask, that would be my, Mr. Bernstein very well summed that up. I concur with that.
Okay. So is that a, will entertain a motion to open to public?
It's all moved.
Second. On favor, on aye, so that we can try to do this in orderly fashion. I'm going to start on my left, my right, starting, you know, with the closest rows. We'll try to work back, then we'll go to the other side, and then we'll see where we are at, and if we need to take a break because our stenographer, his finger's going to fall off. So if there's anyone that would like to offer comment on this application, starting on this side of the room, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, spelling of your last name. Anyone on this side? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jen Ramirez. I live at 158 Johansson. We understand where we are at this point. It was very clear, and thank you for making it clear, I guess. I don't understand all of these exceptions that we're giving, these variances and these waivers that we're allowing with the buffer, with the amount of trees that have to be replanted, with not having a more specific storm drainage, drainage system in that application. I just don't understand. It is your responsibility to protect the citizens of Hillsborough. I do not feel like my family is safe where I'm living right now, given that we are just allowing all of these extra variances.
Well, some of the, I'm just going to interject because I know that's going to come up, that we will be deliberating which, which in any of the variances will make their way into the final.
And there is some leeway with some of those.
I can't speculate until, you know, we get to that point and we ask some questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remind everyone that courtesy of his honor's decision, the township committee amended the zoning ordinance related to this project, who ostensibly make it a quote "variance and waiver-free" project. In spite of that, and I'm going to read from the notice that was provided by Mr. Paula Castro and his office to the applicable residents, "They are still seeking bulk sea variance relief in the township ordinance to permit an accessory building height of 30 feet where the maximum permitted is 20, removal of 38.3 of the trees on the property whereas the maximum permitted is 20%, a two-sided freestanding project identification sign with a 17 and 1/2 square foot sign area per side and a height of 6 feet 4 inches where the maximum permitted height is 4 feet and the maximum permitted area is 20 square feet, and from landscape buffering requirement from internal parking areas adjacent to residential properties to the extent required by the board, they are also seeking a waiver from the township's stream mitigation ordinance." Those are the ordinance, the waivers that are, and variances that are before this board this evening.
Thank you. So then it's your responsibility to keep us safe. And all of those variances could or could not keep us safe.
As I apply to the law, as to what we've been, you know, remanded to do.
Right, but these are up for the board's consideration tonight.
Some of them, some of, well, I mean, they are, but some of them may, there may be no alternative if it prevents the project from being.
There's alternatives, absolutely. I mean, replacement of trees. We can make them replace what the legal law says that we have to replace. We can make them replace all of them, for sure. We can make sure there's a buffer between our houses, our property lines, and where their parking lots can be. Absolutely. That's a possibility. This is a terrible situation, and I know that- And I know that perhaps maybe the Affordable, you know, Housing Act is forcing us into this, but we can make it somewhat better. And at the very least, make it safe for my kids to be there. My four-year-old is still terrified every time it rains. I came here a couple of weeks ago, and I told the Township Committee, the last time we had that big thunderstorm, and it was the same night of the meeting, he, my mother-in-law was babysitting him, and he said, "You have to call Mommy, you have to call Mommy, there's water coming into our house, it's raining too hard, there's water coming in." We have to make it better, or at least make the best of a terrible situation. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, at 8:04, Deputy Mayor Delkor, Rod.
Welcome, Frank.
Any additional comments from the side of the room? I will come back if someone wants to. I'm not going to shut you guys down. I'm going to start on this side, just come up, again, state your name and address for the record, spelling of your last name.
John Tungin, 150 Johansson Ave. So the night of the storm, we didn't prep for this storm because I've been living there for 30 years, I never got an ounce of water in my house. And I've gone through Irene, I've gone through Floyd, I went through Sandy, and hundreds of serious storms, never an ounce of water. Night in question, around, just started to get dark. Someone's flashing high beams, one of my neighbors flashing high beams in front of my house.
That was weird.
Thank you. I was able to save one of my three cars because it matters of 20 minutes. My cars were underwater, my house was underwater. And I'm going to put a name in all your heads, because when you vote tonight, I want you to think about this person. His name is Patrick Jeffrey. I don't know Patrick Jeffrey personally, but I retired from the McQuillan Police Department, and I have brother and sister's officers who went and searched for Patrick Jeffrey, the same as that night that I was battling this storm. And why it's eerie is he was doing the same thing I was doing. First, he was trying to save his vehicles. Then he started to realize his house was in the water. Then he started to realize, you know what, I got to go and clear my catch basin because I have the same situation as Patrick had, where I started to think that if I don't clear that drainage, that emergency evacuation ditch that we've been talking to everybody about, that was clogged up. And I knew it was clogged because I saw my planter and a kayak float towards the back of my house, go down, come right back out on Johansson. I'm out there with a fork, a pitchfork, and I'm walking in the back, and all I can remember is my wife yelling, "Johnny, Johnny, it's not worth it." I retreated. You look up, why Patrick, for some reason, didn't retreat. He went to try to save his house and his neighbor's house. He got flushed down, and officers looked for him all night. He's not with us anymore. He was found two blocks down on Ridgewood Road, and I know that territory very well because I've patrolled it very often. Officers told me, two officers told me, they almost drowned that night. I'm telling you tonight that I'm putting you on notice. I don't care what this judge says. I don't care what anyone says. You know what's best. You know this is a safety issue. We can't take another ounce of water on. I took on two feet of water, I never took on water. What's it going to take, three feet of water? When I was running to go get my car, and I'm not a small guy, I could feel the water pushing me over. If I fell down, my wife would have to be in front of you, not me. I'm going to tell you exactly why we flooded. We did not flood because Raritan River swelled. We didn't flood because the state built walls. We flooded for these reasons. We built the drainage system back in 1972, hasn't been touched since. The pipe size is 36 inches. That pipe size should be six feet. You've tapped Stellar into that drainage system, you've tapped Cortland into that drainage system, you've tapped Harvard Way into that same drainage system. All of that, you all went to Van Cleef, who said that it could take on that water. Once again, we rely on Van Cleef, who we've gone through testimony over and over, realizing that he hasn't even inspected the land. Number two, a catch basin that someone already previously spoke about. That was not a surprise because last year at this time, I walked it with the EPA. We saw, me and two other neighbors, we saw that the wall had caved out. We wrote letters and letters, no one addressed it. This is not by accident. This is because you failed to address it. That water came over, two feet caved down, 10,000 extra gallons of water came racing towards our house. The sewerage grades in front of our house, three, four hours prior to the storm, DPW was out here, two people, one shovel. He walked, they walked to the rear of my yard, and I went out there and I dressed them. I said, they said, oh, they told us to clear the sewer grades and this pipe back here. And I looked right at them and said, "That's not going to help. See this emergency evacuation ditch that you can look two houses down and see there's a tree that's been sitting there and there, and all the debris in there? If this flood comes and that water can't go down that emergency evacuation ditch, my house is going to be on board." You can look those two gentlemen up, because sure enough, a few hours later, that's the situation I was under. So that evacuation ditch was not kept clear. The street was paved last year. No one came out to inspect how they pitched it towards the sewer grades. Then they put smaller sewer grades in so it can't take on the amount of water. So that, every time it rains now, we get a little flash flood. Matter of fact, on the 23rd, September 23rd, after this, me and my neighbor out there looking at it, and we already built up six inches of water in front of my house. So this isn't a one-in-a-hundred-year storm. And now, if you, on top of all the water we're taking, if this gets approved tonight, and you build, and the applicant doesn't care, he's building higher on the C1 waterway. That C1 waterway, we don't, we don't even know where it's going to end up. It's going to end up back in our emergency ditch, another maybe 10, 20,000 gallons of water. These people build, and they don't care. They make it known. They don't care if we have a foot, two feet, they don't care for the lost valley, that amount, they don't care. Because they look at us as a catch basin, and they're going to build higher and higher. This is a safety issue that needs to be addressed, and this is what I'm going to tell you to do. You vote no tonight, and you don't be defying against this judge. You say no until we, the Township, has made some errors during the way. And we will not approve this because of safety reasons until we fix that study, fix the drainage problem. It needs to be fixed. And here's the things that need to be done. The pipe needs to be enlarged by 33%. That's a six-foot pipe that needs to be run 3,000 feet in the back of the house. The next thing you need to do is make sure when you're connecting on the 158 Johansson Lane, that old, from the top up on the Village Green, that's coming all the way. That could be tapped back the other way. The sewer system on the south side, our pipe that all that water from the south side goes down a 24-inch main into a 36-inch, and then down to a 42-inch main. Pipe going between my house and my neighbor's house has to be a minimum of 36 inches. That 24-inch, they make it in there no more. It's, we see it over and over. Went out the 23rd, it's almost a foot below, but we are about to get flooded again. The detention basin up on top, the Township owns some more property, dig that deeper. I mean, the bottom line is this, it can be fixed. Right now, you can get money from the state or the federal government. This needs to have millions and millions of dollars invested into it. We understand that, but it has to be done. It has to be done. Because even if you have to go through this, and he has a man, it's mandatory, tell him to sit, stand by, just stand by before you build your housing to fix our problem. And call the judge and say, "Judge, we're not being defiant. We've made some errors. We didn't realize how bad the situation is. We have a flawed system, it's been 50 years since anyone touched it. We're going to fix that, and then we're going to let him build." We're not asking him to build it, we'll do it. The Township will, we'll take on the burden. We'll take on the burden. Tell him that. We'll take on that burden, and then you can build. If you don't do that, you go to bed tonight, you're putting it on your, that's your, on you. Because this judge, there's a reason why it's back here. Stand up, tell him no, it's a safety issue. We don't need a Patrick Jeffrey. We don't need anyone getting injured or killed. And then we start making moves. We do it prior and now tonight.
Susan Gulliford-Hunt Club Road. I have a question, I guess, for Eric. You said there would be no further testimony this evening. I just, so they, despite what's happened here in the last month, there have been no changes, the applicant has made no changes, correct?
Counselor. Mr. Paula Castro would like to answer that.
It's not a for, it's not a comment.
The answer to the question is...
All right, hold on, hold on. You got to speak, counselor's speaking tonight.
I can hear you.
The answer, Susan, is there is no more testimony before this Board, including what's occurred in the last month, other than what the public wishes to place on the record for the purposes of their comment related to the project.
Okay. I thought maybe they might have made some changes after what occurred. Okay, the applicant, Mr. Weiss knew there were problems with this property when he purchased it. He's not naive, he's a businessman, he's here to make money. He knew that it had previously been denied, and yet he came in anyway. So we can't say he was an innocent that just stepped into this and put all his money into this property, and wow, he didn't know anything about what's been happening there for, what, 20 years now, since it first came before Boards here? And the Board members voted on their principles last time. You guys did what was right, what you thought would make our current residents safe, and the 96 families that are going to innocently move in there, they are also going to be our Hillsborough citizens. They're not some strangers. They're going to move here, they want to be here, they want to, they want to be Hillsborough residents. Sorry, I've been sick for two weeks. So I just hope that, you kind of have to stand by your principles sometimes, even when you know it's going to kind of get you in trouble. But it's important. Thank you.
Any additional comments on the floor?
My name is Amy O'Brien. I live at 105 Kimberly Road. I'm at the bottom of the soup bowl. Something's been hanging and nagging on my mind, and by the way, I'm also sick, can't, we're all getting sick. Nagging on me for months, ever since one of the virtual planning board meetings, with all due respect. Got to the end of the meeting, and you were very frustrated by us picking up, and you said, "Oh, they just are against affordable care housing." I was so insulted.
I didn't say that for the record.
I...
There's a transcript.
It was someone else. I really was so insulted because I understand the frustration. I don't have anything against affordable care housing, regardless of all of the political things and the things that I don't agree with about it. That's not the point. Right now, I don't have an affordable place to live, right now. Me and my kids are out, and I don't, I think it's six or eight months before we even have a hope of getting back in. I don't have a place to live. So I, I know that there are people who need that housing, but I agree with the comments made earlier. We should work together as a village to make it work. I met with Mary LePani, and we and I, he and I talked about the fact that where I am, when that water doesn't make it through that storm drainage system, it can't go where it's supposed to go. It comes out at the drainage and goes right into my living room and right into my neighbor's living room. That's where it goes. It just comes out of the storm drain and into the house. It doesn't even come from the drainage ditch, it comes out from the storm drain system. So I understand that when you have an Ida and a Floyd and an '07 flood, I've been here 25 years, so I've been through all of them. I understand that when you have something of that magnitude, it is, you can't put a wall up around that. I'm not going to wait for Army Corps of Engineers to, 10 years from now, and billions of dollars to put a wall around that. You can't, I get it. But I would like to know that the next time it rains a lot, that what used to be a foot at the end of my driveway is now not two feet in my house, because that's what's going to happen. The difference with this flood, we, I watch, upset, everybody knows that I'm the measurer in the, on the street. And we watch the flood river gauge, and I know exactly how much water I'm going to have in my house based on the gauge. And this time, I couldn't. And the reason was because it was already five feet of water at the end of my driveway when the flood started. And again, no one, every event is different, but now I have no safety net, I have no way to predict. I can't, I don't think I can do this again. So I really would love to work as the village and say, "Okay, guys, but if we're going to build this thing, how can we build it so it doesn't?" Because otherwise, you're gonna, somebody's going to have to save a unit in there for me, because I don't have a place to live. Thank you.
My name is Vivian Lorrea. I live at 104 Kimberly Road, right across the street from Amy. I'm glad that you clarified that we can only speak about feelings tonight, because I have a lot of them. I have a lot of them regarding what's happening in our town, and I have a lot of them regarding plans that are going to build this system that is going to flood my house. See, on September 2nd, I had to tell my children that they're homeless. They're 10 and 7. I have to find a way to bring them back into the house where they once felt safe, and they don't anymore. Because every time it rains, they are scared. They are scared that there's going to be water in our house. They're scared that they're going to lose everything again. And they're scared that they might have to be rescued off the roof like our neighbors. No child, no adult should have to feel that way. My kids do. And thank God, we ran, because we were scared out of our minds when we saw what the river was going to do. And because we knew that the flooding was going to be getting worse and worse in our neighborhood every single time, we ran. So my kids aren't traumatized by that, thank God. But they do have to live somewhere that's not home anymore. They keep asking me when they can go home, and I can't tell them. They ask me if it's going to be safe, and I can't tell them. This is going to be exacerbated by this plan. Like Amy said, every time it rains now, we build this, we keep taking away the trees, we keep building on this land. It all comes in front of our homes, it all comes into our homes. And I don't understand how anybody can say, "Make it happen." I don't understand how anyone can apply for variances that will allow this to happen. I invested in Hillsborough 11 years ago. I came here with my husband to start a family because we love this town, because we believed in the education system, because this is where we wanted to raise our kids, and now we're scared to do that. I understand that everyone has a right to live where they want to live. I'm a schoolteacher in another district. I can't live in Hillsborough on my own salary. I get affordable housing, and I have nothing against it, but like one of my neighbors said, "Fix the problem first. Fix it and then build." Because my kids have a right to feel safe. And I don't know how anyone can go back and approve this, or can go back to their client and say, "We won." What are you winning? And I know you can't answer that question. I'll leave it as rhetorical. What are you winning? What does anybody win in this situation? Like Amy said, we have to work together to fix the problem first. Let me bring my babies home. Let them feel safe, because they don't deserve this, none of us do.[1758.33][1758.33](APPLAUSE)
Maria, January 6, 720 East Freck Avenue, Mandon, New Jersey, also Hillsborough property owner, Block 86, Lot 32155, Camplain Road. Can you present once again the people who are representing the applicant? Who is the, is it an attorney?
Attorney.
Paul Castro.
Paul Castro. Is there anyone else?
There's no one else.
I'm the only attorney.
You're the only, the only person here representing, okay. Today's agenda shows for campus associates that the applicant is seeking preliminary and final major site plan.
Okay, Ms. Chanisak, and please, don't, don't, let's just keep the comments to the board.
I didn't say a word. Someone said something, and I turned around.
I know, you don't need, it's all right.
Are there gentlemen here from, that are also representing campus?
They are not answering questions this evening. It's only commentary.
Because no questions are being answered, is what we were told.
No.
Are those, are those gentlemen representing also campus?
Mr. Bernstein, I'd ask you to jump in because the judge's orders, crystal clear.
I can't hear you.
The judge's orders, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
It's a great, I, I think it is, it says great.
Just talk loud, that's all.
Mr. Bernstein, could you address it, or I will? It's crystal clear what the judge is looking for here. And this is in gross violation of what the judge had in mind. I'm ready now.
I'm sorry, what is it?
I'm gonna jump in, sorry. So Eric, I'll save you the trouble. With all due respect, we, we gave the residents the opportunity to speak tonight and make their comments. Ms. Chanisek, the, the attorney has said he's the only one here representing. If someone else is here from the farm, it's irrelevant. Mr. Paul Castro is the attorney, so you can move forward with that, but...
And I did answer that question.
I, I didn't, I didn't say you didn't. But I'm, but, but the, we understand what the judge is trying to do today, what he would like to do. But we're gonna give every person here that wants to talk the opportunity to talk, and you're gonna sit there and listen to him, too.
I'm not gonna ask, ask a question, whether the judge said it.
I've already, I've already...
So I'm not, please don't tell me what I'll do. The judge is already...
Are you kidding me?
You're in my room now. I'm letting her speak. Please, please, there's no response. No, it's public comment only. You're not the public. Thank you.
Sitting back there, and the gentlemen who are sitting with their backs to us, was difficult to hear. So we didn't hear who the judge is. Can we have the name of the judge who ordered this?
Judge Shanahan.
Judge Shanahan?
Yes.
What's his first name?
Kevin.
Kevin, Judge Kevin Shanahan. And he, I believe he's the presiding judge of the Civil Division currently? Okay. Let me ask questions. All right. So what, what I wanna comment on is this agenda that says that the applicant is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval, see bulk variance and waivers to construct a multifamily development consisting of four three-story, 24-unit residential buildings, clubhouse, associated parking, et cetera, property in a multifamily inclusionary overlay. What is the purpose of, there is no purpose to putting this on this agenda if there isn't, isn't gonna be any discussion of anything, and all you wanna hear is comments from what was previously said. So, so this agenda is very misleading because it's showing that we are discussing this application, which we are not. So this is misleading. Now, there was a settlement agreement between Campus Associates LLC, Weiss, and Hillsborough Township. In this agreement, there were requirements of both parties. So when campus associates put in their application to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board, they were required to do certain things. One of the things they were required to do was to do downstream analysis and to give information on that 42-inch pipe, the hydraulic and hydrologic calculations, to know what's gonna happen with, with, because the Green Hills development already has serious flooding problems. And, and that wasn't done. The applicant had also an obligation. So when they didn't fulfill their obligation, then you had every right to deny their application. So they went after the fact to the judge and said, "Whoa, they didn't fulfill their obligation to us." Well, it goes back to they didn't fill the original application, the, the original obligation. I have a verbatim, a copy of the verbatim transcript of the February 25, 2021 meeting when the application was denied. Can you do a copy, Mr. Paul Castro? And may I give you a copy?
Well, I can't take any.
It's only testimony.
It's not testimony.
It's not new testimony.
I know, but I can't take that into consideration. It's only your comments. I'm sorry.
This is, this is not new comment. This is verbatim what happened on the 25th. This was on page 70. It says, "The basis, Mr. Mayor, for the motion is for the purposes of the record." This was said by Attorney Bernstein. And Mayor Lapone said, "The basis of the denial is the fact that we have a 150-foot buffer that our Environmental Commission recommends that we maintain over the DEP's regulation. The fact that the downstream analysis was not done, and we don't know completely of the engineering that would be in respect to that, and also the fact that there is still some questions as to the water runoff, if it will be adequately maintained." So until all those are answered, I do not want to put as a conditional approval. I would like to have that as my condition tonight. Attorney Bernstein, do you, do you join in that, Mr. Delcor? Deputy Mayor Delcor, I do. I think the, I think the stream court issue is a serious one. I think we've had our professionals talk about that. And so it goes on and on, the reasons why this was denied. And the main reason is because that engineered, that, that downstream analysis was not done, which was very important. When, when, when people came, when the property owners from Green Hills came, everyone said, "We have flooding problems. We have flooding, flooding problems. We're afraid of what's gonna happen. When this development comes in, it's gonna be even worse." And so what happened? The applicant didn't do the downstream study. So they were denied. So they went to a judge, and the judge says, "You can't make him, you can't make them have any variances, any waivers, any downstream study. Don't say anything about the pipe, the 150-foot buffer. No way, it's gonna be 50-foot." What is that? How can a judge do that? He's gotta follow, he also has to follow certain procedures. Was, there was no memorializing resolution documenting that this application was denied by the, by the planning board. There was no, so what was given to the judge? Was this given to the judge? And if this was, then all of these people need to start raising holy hell, contact newspapers and everything because it says right here that the applicant did not do that study. And that was important. That was one of the, the biggest, biggest things, considerations for this application, in addition to getting, getting permits from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Division of Land Use Regulation. They need permits for the freshwater wetlands, and they need permit for a flood hazard area. And so has that been provided? Now, also, there's an ordinance, an ordinance that was, that was passed because this property is in the I-3 light industrial zone, and that does not permit housing in that zone. So an ordinance was passed. But that ordinance, and I've repeated this numerous times with numerous, when ordinances are adopted, when it's a change to the zoning ordinance, that has to go to the Somerset County Planning Board. There has to be a, a change in the zoning map, and that ordinance has to go to the Somerset County Planning Board. And you have to have a date of filing before it becomes effective. I asked for that. I had asked Mr. Maskey. I had sent him an email. I said, "Where is that? That's very important. This project can't go forward until you have that because you cannot put a house, a residential housing development in the light, in the I-3 light industrial zone." I never got that. Where are the, where are the permits? I had submitted a request for government records through the Open Public Records Act for the permits from the NJDEP. The response was, "There are no such records." So what is this application? What is this going on over here? And, and, and to backtrack, the applicant was the one who defaulted by not providing that study. So the judge needs to look at that, and he needs to, and he needs to see all of the records, not that they came and said, "Oh, they didn't pass our, they didn't pass our application, and so now we get to have our attorney fee, fees paid and whatever else fees they wanna get paid." Meanwhile, when they defaulted, they should pay. They should pay for our attorney. They should pay for our engineer. They should pay for all of the officials who worked on this project because they were in default. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Chris Golis. I live at 128 Johansson Avenue. I'm sure you guys remember me. I'm kind of a memorable person, right? So last time I was up here, I told you guys about my flooding situation at my house. The retention emergency basin thing that flows, goes behind my house. Spent a couple hundred bucks, rented a machine, cleaned it out myself, made sure it was crystal clear. The water coming from the Stellar Academy brings debris, fills it all up, right? Told you that when it rains, really, really heavy. I've been here since 2010. I, it backs up about 10 feet into my, the ditch is about four foot deep. So that's four feet plus 10 feet of grade going into my backyard. This storm, my backyard was a friggin' lake. I literally had eight inches of water smashing into my back door. Thankfully, I had sandbags cuz I was gonna put new sand in my pool filter, which I didn't get a chance to do. Put some garbage bags, some sandbags, but I still wound up getting three inches of water in my house. Funny story, if I may. My wife found a box of old diapers in the house. And we were using the diapers and the shop vac to clean up as much water as we can. We lost the couch. We lost the rug. We lost a couple other personal things, but most of the stuff we were able to carry upstairs. 11 years, there was never water in that house. Previous to buying that house, there was never water in that house. My neighbor's houses never had water in the house. That night, ate some food. Went to the local liquor store, bought whiskey. On my way home, it started raining like freaking crazy. I started driving around neighborhood. Taylor Ave, a river. Duke's East, a river. Couldn't get down Kimberly. It was gone. This was by 8:30, 9 o'clock at night. Johansson Ave, a river. I'm the one that drove by his house, honking a horn, flashing lights. And that was just the first way going in. I went down, so what's that, south on Johansson? Went around. When I came back, his car was already a foot and a half in the water. Going down, it was only maybe six inches. I started honking water. I was like, "This is no good." Harps cans, float weight. I'm not against affordable housing. And I'm not against anybody making money. Lord knows how luck money, all right? But there's a time and a place for everything. Maybe the solution is to fix it before they build. You know, we're not gonna talk about things that could happen behind closed doors, but if the judge says it has to be, I guess it has to be. But maybe fix it before it gets built. I don't know. Or maybe there's a solution to actually put it where it belongs, right? Because at this point, the variance has got changed, zoning got changed to make it work in a place where it really shouldn't work. Maybe not everybody in the room believes in God, but there's a reason why certain things are, or Mother Nature, why certain things are. You probably shouldn't be putting things where they don't belong. Eight inches of water hitting my back door. This is stuff that you watch on TV like it's not supposed to happen if you don't live in a flood zone. I don't have flood insurance. My best friend lives in the valley. He's actually one of the people that lives in the valley that doesn't have to have flood insurance because he doesn't live in a flood zone. He's at the end of Bozal Ave. Eight feet of water in his house. Does water mitigation, is fixing it gonna fix the problem? I, I don't know. I walked behind my house to try and find some of the things that flowed, flowed away. I recently took, in, in, in March, I bought a 2006 Big Bear Chopper motorcycle that I was gonna restore. I restored it a week before the flood. That was three feet underwater because it was in the back of my yard. All my tools, all my supplies, all, my gun. So I walked back behind my houses. There's this huge wall, another retention basin. There's so much rock back there that where can you, even if we did put in a six-foot round pipe, it can't go, this stuff can't go anywhere. Adding more water and adding more issues to the problem, it's just gonna make it worse, guys. It's gonna make it worse. I don't know if you guys have been around there, if you walked through there. I know the governor came down here and all these other people, but if you guys wanna trade, take, trade houses with me, you know, I'm good for that, too. Get me out of there. Watching my eight-year-old vacuum, 11-year-old with my wife freaking out, like, it's just not, it's not cool. I don't know you personally, so I'm not gonna say anything. Like, it, it, it's a business, right? It's, it's business, it's all business. But man, at some point, somebody's gotta have common sense and heart. And I hope this board does. Thank you.
Hello again. Mary Ann Soweat, 142 Johansson Avenue. You know, any, under any other circumstance, this development would not be approved by the planning board tonight. In fact, the denial in February arrived by the board despite the potential legal ramifications because it was denied because there was enough testimony and evidence provided that showed that this is not a good project, especially due to the threat of the increased flooding to our neighborhood. The application failed to prove that the development would not cause more flooding to my neighborhood because the applicant's engineer failed to provide an accurate site plan and legitimate stormwater system design. My next paragraph is about the letter from Panoni, which I believe is excluded from this tonight, which completely contradicted the engineer's report. He specifically said, "Significant inconsistencies were found between the plan..." "...and existing conditions." That's okay, that's good.
I would point out to the board that the Panoni letter, which is out there, had nothing to do with the application as it currently is before the board. Whether it has any implications going forward is yet to be determined. But for the purposes of this application at this time, it is not germane.
It's not what?
Germane, applicable.
Okay. Okay. Well, I felt that we, ourselves, found the plan not to be workable.
Please turn to the mic.
Oh, sorry. Van Cleve's stormwater plan doesn't make any sense as designed. He didn't even know where the northeast grate was. There were many, many things that he said during his testimony that were refuted. I mean, what are they going to do without a valid stormwater plan? Just wing it? Start building and just throw out some pipes? "All of this is for 24, easily affordable apartments." Oh, and the 72 market rate ones. Congrats, campus, for finding the loopholes to get the application approved by Court of the Court. Great job. Isn't it ironic that this hearing had to be postponed because of the flooding? I found that so ironic. And we were trying to find humor that night by saying, "Does anyone have a kayak so we can get to that meeting? We gotta get there. We can't get out of our neighborhood, though. Can't drive." By 8:00 PM on September 1st, the stormwater flowing from the area of the detention basin began to enter the neighbors' homes from the rear. These homes had never had any water before. The water flowed to Johansson Avenue, and the drains on Johansson were quickly overwhelmed by the amount of water. A river was flowing down Johansson by 9:00 PM, and in some areas, several feet deep. It happened so fast. I actually ran outside and took a video, which I sent to the board that evening, of the storm grate under at least, you know, inches and inches of water. It was just bubbling. Neighbors are trying to move their cars from the street onto higher ground and up onto their lawns, but many cars were engulfed with water, abandoned in the streets, and destroyed. The stormwater grates were deep underwater and bubbling. The drainage swale that runs along the back of my house, well, it, it's dug out about six feet deep, and it was overflowing into my yard and had a very strong current that flattened all the vegetation around it. At each intersection that dips into the storm drains in the streets, there were feet of water. of water, and this was all due to the stormwater runoff from the failed system. At this point, we were an island, and it was scary. In the middle of the night, the river swelled and added several more feet of muddy water to the neighborhood. Some homes had water up to their gutters. There was no way to get out safely, and we had to wait two days until the water receded to leave the neighborhood. I do hold campus liable for the poorly planned system that they intend to install, and hold Hillsborough Township responsible for making sure that the stormwater management system is remediated and redesigned to overaccommodate for the development should it go through. Those responsible for the failure of the stormwater drainage system and detention basin will be held liable. Thank you.
Thank you.
A little taller than her. Kristen Kelly, 156 Dukes Parkway. I know this is just an emotional rant, and it's not gonna change anything, but, and I haven't, you know, come up here and said anything yet, I'm kind of coming in at the 11th hour. I'm sick to my stomach for myself and for my neighbors. I too did not have flood insurance, and this time I got 18 inches of water on Dukes Parkway. Myself and my neighbor on the other corner of Johansson and Dukes also had never had water ever. I've been in this house 12 years, and we were here for Irene. We saw it creeping up. It stopped and left, thankfully, but this time we weren't as lucky. It's pretty clear that things are getting worse. It's preposterous to me to think that someone could even consider making this situation even a drop worse than it is. I'm a business owner, and I definitely understand profits. I like money too, and I don't wanna stop. And listen, affordable housing, when I was a single mom, I lived in affordable housing in Bridgewater. I very much appreciated that. It got me where I am. I was able to get an affordable mortgage and build credit, and look, I'm a business owner, and I'm successful, and hooray for me. Put a lot of money into the house that I have on Dukes Parkway, and I watched it all kind of get, like, talk about your backyard being a lake, it really was a lake, and the water inside my house didn't go away until I made it go away. I had to spend two full days getting the water out of there and throwing away stuff that, you know, I mean, this is, this is lives. And listen, I'm not trying to shame anybody, but it's disgusting that our local government that we elect, that we have to protect us as a town, can't help us. You guys tried. I appreciate that. From what I hear, you guys tried to do what you could, but guess what? The machine of progress, right? So here we are, our town can't even protect us. Next time, it is gonna be one of the residents of Green Hills floating down the street. And I'm not being, you know, hyperbolic about it. A life is gonna happen next time. People were getting rescued off of the roofs by helicopter. I understand that you guys can't possibly imagine. I could never have imagined until I bought a house in, and I'm not in a flood zone, like I said, never been flooded before, did not have flood insurance. I could never have imagined the PTSD that happens, that everyone's talking about, after the water's receded. You're not the same. You don't wanna even be there. And listen, it's gonna happen, we're gonna have to take it. I do hope there's something you can do, if there is, please, we're all begging you. We need some remediation there. It was, the basin collapsed, for God's sake, and if this rain was terrible and a once-in-a-century, I don't believe that. Every 10 years or so, it gets worse and worse. So please, you know, again, just an emotional rant, not gonna change any hearts and minds, but, you know, I know there's a lot of people here that do sympathize, and they just can't do anything. It's pretty disgusting, though, that, you know, our, that local governments, which are so important, can't protect their own people. I'm pretty pissed about that, but thank you.
Too slow.
Hi, my name is Trent Baker, and I don't live in Mando or close to Mando. I live about Farm Row, and I've been there for 40 years. And I just, I guess, you know, I see the, I see the people here and what they're going through, and I think about the President of the United States who was in Mando and Hillsborough after this flood. And then I think about, I can see what you guys did. It's like, I don't want this place, you don't want this place, and yet here we are, getting crammed down our throats. I don't really know that because I don't know enough about this whole project. I see this gentleman playing with his computer, and I think it's very rude, by the way. So, you know, I know this took place, or you had a court case or something with a judge some time ago, and it was before all this flooding went by, happened, act of nature. And again, the President of the United States was here, and all of a sudden, you know, maybe things have changed. We have a couple of attorneys, and maybe they, and we have maybe the proprietors of that land, that may see something that has happened in our communities that brings us to get, rather than, I don't know, it's just, just like these other people said, I'm sitting here, and I'm frigging disgusted. Not with you, because I know the planning board has tried to do what they can, but to have something crammed down with people's throat, where, you know, we take down trees, constantly take down trees, there's nothing to absorb the water, and the next thing you know, the people downstream are paying the price for what we're doing upstream. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Roy Miller. I'm at 162 Johansson. I'm one of the newer residents. I don't know many of the people here yet. We moved in about a year ago, a new resident to the Hillsborough area. We were made aware that there was a potential for a development to happen over the way, down the road, and, you know, at first, we're like, ah, do we wanna buy in this area, 'cause, you know, that might be an eyesore, and then we're like, you know what, there's a buffer, it's gonna be great, maybe it'll be a start of some great development. But when we bought the house, we had no idea that there was, we're FEMA zero for flood, zero at my house. And the night of the storm, before the river swelled at 7:30, there was three feet of water, and it wasn't a lake, it was a river. My backyard faces a tiny stream that feeds into the storm, sewer that goes, that's fed by 206 and all that. It was scary. And then I met Omar earlier, later that night, at 8:30, after I had to sandbag my doors to try and keep water out, and there was nothing that we could do. And the storm drains, and one correction or addition, the storm drains weren't, the water wasn't going in because they were acting like a flood navigation system. All the water came up through them, and I have pictures of them a foot or two above the sewer drains. And I'm in one of the highest parts of the neighborhood. Guys, I don't understand why science, or reason, or physics doesn't apply. Again, I don't, you know, I argued with the county for three months to put in new fire alarms in the same electrical, and it took three months to get through, and yet, we're not gonna do any of that. We're not gonna do environmental checks, we're not gonna do water flow. I don't understand. I wasn't here before when all this was being argued, but I just don't understand. The President stood on 206 with our governor, and the reason he didn't come into our neighborhood is because they couldn't get there. I mean, and they literally said on that spot, "We need to figure out on how to stop development overcrowding this area, causing this issue." And yet, we are here, less than a month and a half later, arguing about 800 quite large impervious surface and houses to be put up right next door to it, 500 feet from where the President stood when he said that. I don't understand. So I, I hope that you guys can continue to fight, but honestly, this is, this is beyond rational in any way, shape, or form. So, thank you.
It's okay. I worked around. Chris Golis, 128 Johansson Avenue. I'm back. So, we live in a world of rules. I'm in law enforcement, I work in corrections, Essex County Department of Corrections, 13 years now. Some rules, sometimes they need to be broken in order for things to get really fixed. I know lawyers are saying, "We're not allowed to talk without, we're not allowed to add any new information, no new evidence." Again, because the judge said so, right? I don't think the judge knew that our houses are gonna get destroyed last month, right? Someone mentioned, like, the President was here, you know, people were walking around, like, there might be an exception to the rule, saying, "You know what, Your Honor? This is significant enough to kind of put the brakes on this thing, and let's see if we can tweak it a little bit to fix it again." Fix the problem, I'm not against affordable housing. I come from low income, I'm first generation here, Polish family, like, I know about being broke. I know about, still have a home in Irvington, New Jersey, that I have tenants in, like, I know about it. I work in Newark, I know about it, right? I'm not against it. Not against the taller building, I'm not against that. I'm just against my house getting screwed up. My neighbors' houses, I got potty mouth, sorry. I'm against, I'm against all that stuff, right? I made videos too. I'm a little vulgar in my videos, so that's why I didn't send you guys links or anything, but I think after tonight, I will. I don't know if that's gonna, obviously, it's not gonna sway the decision afterwards, but I was walking around, you know, down my jewel's deep, full of water in the neighborhood. That's not supposed to happen, man! I get it, it was a really bad storm, but not my, not my backyard. I should, I, I was afraid I was gonna get swept away. I went back there to check on my motorcycle, I wasn't digging out any ditches, I did that previous. The next day, I couldn't even get to my boat, which was in the water, I couldn't go check, couldn't go check on it, so I took out my little toy boat, and I was playing with my boat on Johansson Avenue. Like, come on, again. Little bit of marbles, a little bit of heart, common sense. I beg of you guys, I implore you, let's fight this a little bit more, please. Thank you.
Sharon Baragi, 133 Taylor Avenue. I was born and raised in Hillsborough, and I've lived in Green Hills my entire life. I've been there through every single flood. They've gotten worse and worse. When Courtyard was developed, when the Stellar Academy was developed, when 206 was widened, every flood has gotten worse. My aunt and uncle were original owners in the neighborhood as well, and we had to move them out of there because their house was flooding after 30 years of raising a family and never flooded before. I take care of an elderly father who thankfully was rushed to the hospital a few days after the flood. If it had happened during the flood, what would happen? How do we get emergency personnel in there when we're under six feet of water? Usually during the floods, we go down to Kimberly Ave., and we help our friends. We couldn't get to them this time. The middle of the neighborhood, which never flooded before, was underwater, there were cars in the road that couldn't be moved. What are we gonna do if we have an emergency? Who's gonna be responsible for that? I'm not against affordable housing. I can't afford to stay in Hillsborough anymore. I would love to find affordable housing. It doesn't belong there. Please, do something for us. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Colleen Schwartz, and I live on 134 Taylor Avenue. I have so many emotions, and I'm so proud of my neighbors for coming here. None of these people were elected to things, they're not lawyers, they're not used to speaking in front of people. Most of us probably hate speaking in front of people, so thank you for everybody that has spoken. I know many people from our neighborhood that were like, "Why are you going? It's already decided." Didn't you hear that? Like, it's, you're, what you're gonna say isn't gonna have any matter. And then I hear what is spoken about. "The lawyer said this." "The lawyer said, 'There's no more testimony.'" "The lawyer's," you know, the judge, I'm sorry, not a lawyer. "The judge said this." The judge basically said, "It doesn't matter. The earth could've fallen apart, it doesn't matter. You can't bring any new evidence because this is what's gonna happen." So, that just, I can't wrap my head around it. The things that happened on September 1st, which happened today in my 56th birthday, should have changed everything, everything. Okay, yes, it already, can you understand that you gave your, you know, blessing to this with no opposition and no, you're not putting in place anything that needs to be fixed? Now, this is all different now. I mean, there are people rescued off the top of their houses. Can you even imagine? Because now you get to just give a motion, so, you know, no testimony. You're in your family, and the power's out, the water's rushing, you're thinking it's, you don't know what's happening, you don't have phone, you don't have anything, you have no idea what's happening. The water's raising now up to every floor that has never been wet before, and you are now climbing out the top roof of your house in the pitch black when it's storming, with your children, losing your pets, okay? That is one story. I know of many other stories, but that's one story. I was blessed to be in the eye center of our neighborhood, and nothing happened, which is incredible that feet down the road, there was such devastation, absolute devastation. That night, in our little town community Facebook page, people were saying, "Oh my God, we're getting water. We've never gotten water. How is this happening?" So I said to my husband, I'm like, "This is no joke, I know we've never been flooded, but this could actually be happening. This could actually be happening." I mean, you know, I mean, I'm getting a little emotional here because the fact that, that you guys, and I, like, everybody said, we know that you fought. I spoke 10 years ago, or whenever the last thing, when it was denied, and there was a gentleman that used to be a mayor in our town that spoke. He has since passed, I believe, and he gave such a, he talked about the town that he knew 50 years ago, and how people helped each other, and that night, not the same people, but that night, you guys turned it down. Now, somebody brought up a good point, this is kind of a little bit segue now, that the people that purchase, that wanna build now, they knew there was a problem, they knew there had been denials. They knew that. But then all of a sudden, doesn't really matter. They knew there was problems, but maybe they knew that they weren't gonna be opposed because of the affordable housing. Maybe they knew. We all know that there's things that happen behind closed doors, we all know it. None of us are stupid, right? Maybe he knew. Oh, he, I'm saying he, I don't know if it's actually just one person. Maybe they knew, oh, well, this isn't gonna be fought against because we need affordable housing. I wish if they were gonna make this affordable housing, make all 96 units affordable housing. Make all of them! But they don't wanna do that because maybe that's not where they're, they use the affordable housing to make money, and that's disgusting to me personally. The fact that people didn't wanna come because they felt like they had no voice, I wanted to put on the record my voice, that this is disgusting, and that, that what has happened should change everything, okay? And I know that, that you're saying that there's nothing we can do, and, okay, well, at least I can say my say. And I, once again, I'm very thankful to the people that have spoken because it's not easy. And I'm sure it's not easy for even the lawyers that are speaking, especially when it's something that's very emotional. And then another thing that I just jotted down, that's kind of, you know, many people over the years, I've been there for 20 years, my friends and stuff have had to go and get like variances and stuff because they wanted to put a shed on their, on their, you know, and deny because you don't have a certain amount, a percentage of impervious coverage, and they're not even in a flood area, like, you know.
You don't have the right judge.
And I hate to say that, and I hate to even say this because I don't want anyone to mock me, but I've been watching Handmaid's Tale, and if anybody's ever seen that, I wonder when. I wonder where they are getting some of their thinking about how, you know, it's this way or the highway and you think in democracy that that's not ever gonna happen, that could never happen, right? Lives are at stake right now, that should change everything. Somebody was rescued, I mean, I don't even, I mean, if some, did somebody, should have somebody died, I don't know. Pets died, should somebody, a person, I don't even know, would that have changed everything? Or would the judge have been like, "No, sorry, I told this guy five years ago that there'd be no problems, so I gotta stick with it." And then not only that, but why wouldn't they have to fix it? Somebody here was saying, "We'll fix it, our town will fix it before they do anything, let's work together." And that's great, but why? Why should we, they want to build and make money off of that property. Why should Hillsborough, why should any of us have to be another dog? Okay, let us do proper investigations, this is what needs to be done from engineers or whoever that say that this has to be done. And then they should have to pay for it. They knew by it that it was wetlands, they knew. So they should have to, they should have to pay for it. I don't know, it just, it's mind-boggling to me and I'm sorry if I have to listen to people say, "There's nothing you can say, this is no testimony." So I don't even care if you had a report from the best engineer in the land, it would cost you a million dollars to get and they said, "X, Y, Z is gonna happen if this is built." I'm like, "Doesn't matter?" No, no, doesn't matter. So anyway, basically what I'm saying is just stop listening to my ramblings because you said that we could talk from the heart and that it might not change anything. But my dad in heaven always spoke for what was right and so I hope you're proud because I'm speaking and I don't know if it'll change anything, but at least maybe you'll remember what I'm saying and you'll remember these people. I didn't get flooded, but I can't bear to see these people and what's happening to their families and their children and their lives. So, and don't hurt her the next time, it breaks. You don't think PTSD is real? It's real. Okay, thank you.
I'm like, do you need a break?
Right.
You sure? Okay. Come on, mayor, if you can sprint.
I'll be quick. Mayor, I'm Dirk O, Borough of Manville, 325 North Main Street. I've been in contact with FEMA quite a bit these days, as you can imagine, because your little area there is compounded 10 times in my town. We have over 400 substantially damaged homes right now. And so the situation is where we built in areas that maybe we shouldn't have built in, but how do you make that right? And the only way you can make that right is through the Blue Acres program. And I got a note here from FEMA that I like to read, it just says, "We are expecting a pilot program to be announced in November called Swift-Current. This will be under the Flood Mitigation Assistance Program for homeowners that have flood insurance through the NFIP. Priorities will be substantially damaged homes and severe repetitive loss homes." So, my heart goes out to the residents here that have children that had to endure this because in 1971, I was taken out of my house in a boat with my older brother and my parents couldn't get home. The town was cut off, becomes an island. So it was very traumatic for me. I lived it and my heart goes out to all these people that have lived this. So, I would say for the residents here, fill out a Blue Acres application. Get that down to Trenton, get it logged in Hillsborough because there's gonna be money out there with the president coming here and if these homes are substantially damaged, give them the option to get on with their lives and knock them down because we're never gonna see flood mitigation here, okay? The Army Corps came to Manville, they said, "Ha, you're on your own." So, there is hope for the people and I pray that we get our fair share of federal dollars that we need to correct this problem. Because I got a major problem on my hands right now, right? I gotta fix Manville. Because there's no other, there was no other choice, we can't live like this any longer. All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Angelina Diaz, I live on 113 Hamlet Road. I was here for the last meeting and it was my understanding by the court itself that it was denied because of whatever reasons. But also, when I was here, I was also listening to them saying that you do have a choice. You do have the right to decline anything, it's just a matter of, if you decline, then you will not have the right to decline any other, right? So basically, what I feel is that if you approve this stuff, that you're saying that everybody in my neighborhood, doesn't count, doesn't matter. Because at the end of the day, your houses and where you live, you're good, right? And you're protecting the other people who live in Hillsborough, which is majority of, I've been living in Hillsborough since I was five, so it's been 45 years. So I've seen the growth and the developments that's been built on so many foreign lands. That I feel that if you guys decide to accept whatever has to happen to the development, then you're just believing in money and you're believing in the ability to pocket that money, to don't care about anybody else, about anybody but us, you know? Everybody else is, you don't be caring about them. I just think that you should stand up and fight for us, even though it's like, what, 50 houses? Fight for us. I mean, that's all I have to say.
Come on, Susan, if you can brace the next person.
Susan Gulliford, Hunt Club Road. Approaching this from a slightly different angle, there were no changes to this application, from what I understand. And you all felt this was wrong when you denied it last time. If it was wrong then, it's wrong now. Not only do I feel like you voted what you thought was best, you followed your conscience, which is important sometimes. I've been on a board where we received letters saying from attorneys, "Do this or this is gonna happen." And I voted no anyway and, okay, we didn't get our way, but you can sleep at night. And I know there's, there's ramifications for Hillsborough Township and for this board if you vote no. But sometimes you just have to do what you know is right. And we understand that. And I almost feel like the court is saying to you guys, "We know you think this is wrong, but change your vote anyway." It's almost like, like you're being asked to lie. And I can't think of any other way to describe it. And I know part of the argument is gonna be the new development doesn't have to improve it, they just have to not make it worse. I've heard that argument for 20 years now. But obviously, from what all the neighbors are saying as time passes, excuse me, and more development comes into that area, it is getting worse. So. I, okay, I just hope that because it was wrong then, it's wrong now. And I know sometimes you just have to stand up for what you believe. Thanks.
Additional comments? Okay. And we'll move to close.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Eric. Next steps.
Yes.
Yes.
I apologize to everybody with my back to you, but I'm at least trying to get the thing through. No one, I think, on this board or in this room has lived this nightmare more than I. I've been the township's affordable housing attorney for a number of years, I've been a number of other things for the township and I've been this planning board attorney for 22. So, I want the public to understand that there were no backroom deals because trust me, if this is the best backroom deal we got, we're in a lot of trouble. I wanna point out to everybody tonight, and I don't want Mr. Polo Castro to interrupt me on this for the moment, what the consequences are. And I'll use Ms. Gulliford's comment as sort of the jumping off point. Judge Shanahan's decision was not, "You blew it, come back and think about it again." There were a number of nuances and not-so-subtle nuances from his honor relative to what can happen if you do this again. Let's start out with, I can't promise, but I can come bloody close to it, that if we go back and turn this down again, other than I can guarantee Mr. Polo Castro will be back before his honor, I can't tell you in how quick a period of time, but I'm sure it will be relatively quick, followed very shortly thereafter by the Fair Share Housing Center, who as you know and was sort of the other party in this little adventure we all had after the decision, when they sought to have your immunity stripped. And the consequences of a return with our immunity at issue is twofold. Issue one, folks, is that the Campus Associate Development is gonna be approved by his honor and there's no guarantee it won't be approved by his honor worse than it is now and I'm using worse in your determination of the number of units, et cetera. But minimum, they're gonna get approved with the units, they're gonna be told to build and God knows what else, the township is gonna be told what it can't do regarding this development. The second and equally important problem is that we will probably lose our immunity, which will open us up to a number of builder's remedy suits, which will make evenings like this a romp in the park. Because there will be applications galore all over town by developers who we have cut, I won't say cut, we have settled with as part of this overall situation, who will now want more. And it won't be more affordable units, it'll be more market rate units. And this township has done something that almost no other municipality in the state did and that was get more than 20% affordable housing on pretty much every site in town that we settled with under this. You won't have that. You'll have, you'll see builder's remedy and density bonuses and the whole nine yards. So I want everybody to understand, above and beyond, we should tell Judge Shanahan what he can do with his decision, what the consequences of doing that, and it goes well beyond this development. It also, for those who believe that if we go back and we make the pitch, I can't guarantee if we go back and make the pitch and tell him that the reason the board turned it down was because of Tropical Storm Ida, that we're gonna get any more favorable response from his honor than the one you all saw on June the 7th, which was the only thing we held on to was our immunity. Because the public's unaware, both Fair Share Housing and Campus Associates sought to have the township's immunity stripped. And because of all the other things the township has done over the last several years, that was avoided. It won't be avoided a next time around. I don't make predictions often, as many of you know, but this one's pretty, well, pretty close. So, if people believe that a second turn down is going to produce a different result, I would argue that the analogous situation is a definition of insanity which is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. The board made a decision. The board made an informed decision after multiple hearings and the court said the board was wrong. And we all have to agree, God knows, over 40 years of practicing, I have disagreed with members of the bench on more occasions than I choose to mention, but that's where we are. And by the way, if we get this back because of the way certain issues were raised, it's not going to anybody else probably, but Judge Shanahan, who will pull out his decision and proverbially beat this township with it. But more importantly, the residents need to understand that saying no doesn't necessarily mean not only is it going to come back and not be no, that it's going to make the application go away. What's here tonight is the approval to build. What happens after that is a, excuse me, left to be determined by the forces of nature, the forces of finance, and the law, and engineering. All that's here this evening, folks, is to approve the application that is before you. His honor set the rules. I realize the public wasn't happy with them. Doesn't mean we were all happy with them, but that's what his honor said and frankly, contempt of court, folks, is not a happy situation. Forget for the board, for me or anybody else. So. The board has gone on record. The board has gone on record before on this situation and I'm sure that members of the board are going to comment, ask questions and address the situation. But I want the public to understand that going back to Judge Shanahan and telling him you should reconsider this decision because of Tropical Storm Ida runs a significantly larger risk than where we were back in March when we were before the application because even if his honor recognizes it, it's quite probable he's going to say, and in spite of that, there are obligations to be made and obligations to be honored and there are obligations within this application and beyond that have to be taken into consideration. In terms of what's before you this evening, you have the four hearings that were conducted. The testimony of the applicant's professionals, the reports from Mr. Euro and Mr. Maskey, the comments made by Mr. Euro and Mr. Maskey on the record. There are variances that are still out there that need to be addressed that the board has, well, I believe, in its power to address as it would in any application. If this were a truly variance-free and waiver-free application, there'd be nothing to discuss except yes or no. But there are variances and there are waivers being asked for and to the extent they don't impact the application, the building of the application, i.e. the plan, the board, I believe, is within its rights to address. If the board has questions of myself or Mr. Maskey, Mr. Euro, as to those, we'd be more than happy to discuss them, but I believe that the variances and waivers that are in the notice that I read at the beginning of this hearing are still an issue so long as they do not prevent Mr. Polo Castro's clients from building the application they have made.
Microphone, please.
Don't use that one.
So, how do you square, maybe you're saying it a different way, but how do you square that? I'm hearing you say maybe you can deny some of the variances? Or am I overreading that? Because I'm not sure how you square that before you get into deliberation. It's having to be of minds, hopefully, because I read it in paragraph seven of the order. "The board shall take appropriate action to approve the application" and those are before, those variances are before this board. So I'm not sure how you square that. And also, if you impose conditions, if you approve it, but you impose conditions that are unreasonable and illegal, we will definitely back before the judge. And I'm not predicting, but I believe we will get attorney's fees again and I, everything you said, Mr. Burkey. So I want that to be clear and I'm not counsel to the board, obviously, but Mr. Bernstein and I think we hopefully share that view, but I, I don't, I don't.
I think, I think, Mr. Paula Castro, we share the generic view. I think there's questions as to whether or not, for example, and I'm picking one out off the top of my head, the size of the monument sign at the beginning is necessarily going to prevent your client from building 96 units. Whether or not the height of a building, either 38 versus 30 for the clubhouse, may or may not prevent your client.
Yeah. I'm not the attorney for the board, so if you're counseling the board.
I'm just, I'm.
My view to you, Mr. Bernstein, is that to the extent there's variance or condition, or variance, a condition that is unreasonable, we may be back. And that is, because if it's something de minimis, it's a reasonable developer, I just want that to be on the record so that we're not deemed to be acquiescing in advance of this.
I would be surprised if you had acquiesced.
Okay.
Why are we debating this?
With all due respect.
Counselor, can you please finish your comment? Okay. I believe that there are certain items within the variances and waivers that are not necessarily in conjunction with the ordinance that was adopted for the project, as was amended by the Township Committee post Judge Shanahan's decision. To the extent that those may not impact the application or the underlying building of the 96 units, I think are, I believe, reasonable to be considered. I can't stop the applicant from doing what they're going to do if they're not happy with that decision. I don't think his honor simply said, you're going to rubber stamp it as it is, don't bother. Because frankly, if he had, should have kept the application and made the decision right then and there, which was in, within his purview to do. I am not suggesting that the number of units can be made, changed, that the number of buildings, that the height of the buildings, my understanding, and Mr. Maskey and Mr. Euro can correct me, that the waiver being requested as the 30 versus the 38 is the clubhouse, not the height of any of the residential buildings. The sign has nothing to do with the building of the residential buildings. The request for a tree mitigation waiver, I would tell you that you will be hard-pressed to deny that tree mitigation waiver, because this is an inclusionary development. If it weren't, whole different story, but unfortunately, there is case law that would indicate that a tree mitigation waiver and inclusionary development such as this one is not deniable. Those are what I'm talking about, obviously. That's the only items before you. You can't change the application other than those items, and those are the items in terms of being requested to be granted.
Sorry, just for clarification purposes, I know, because it was kind of brought up that, you know, the judge just said, go ahead and pass it and all, but wasn't it true that what the judge told the township to do, which the township did do, was to fix or make the issues or the reasons for the deny, the original denial to go away?
Not only that, Your Honor, he is, Mr. Chairman, he ostensibly told the Township Committee to amend the zoning ordinance to make this a variance-free and waiver-free application. And if you had a variance-free and waiver-free application, I wouldn't even be uttering these words, because I would tell you that based on his honor's decision and the ordinance that the Township Committee approved, you have no choice but to approve the application as submitted without variances and without waivers. There are variances, there are bulk variances, let me explain. These are not use variances, these are certain limited bulk variances. If the board decides that some or all of them are acceptable, I go back to my underlying issue, does the issue, does the variance impact the application and the prevention of the building of the application as proposed? I think Mr. Paula Castro would easily concur that the size of the sign, for example, is not going to change the building.
I've spoken my piece, Mr. Chairman, you've acknowledged me, and that's why I responded, Mr. Delcourt. The chairman acknowledged me, I've spoken my piece, and we're super confident how the judge would rule to the extent there's a major change, and we'll hear what the board does. We're, we're going to hear how, how to deliberate.
We can go to the stand again before we do.
Unfortunately, we've closed it, and I know.
He just brought up information that, okay.
And a lot of, you know, what our, what Mr. Bernstein's saying is that, you know, we've, you know, have kind of gotten through this, unfortunately, prior. But the thing that, just another quick question is again, because this is all kind of contingent on the settlement, I'll call it, with Fair Share Housing. The settlement didn't talk about signs, right? It talked about number of units. So I think that's kind of where the basis of this would be. Didn't talk about the height of the, of buildings. It talks about, again, how many units. So I think that's really the crux of it, and as Mr. Bernstein stated, the judge had his opportunity to approve this application on his own, chose not to, and the application is left up to interpretation, since his issue was with the complete rationale, because he was in agreement with us as why we denied it, because he said, make that problem go away, and the Township Committee had to make those things go away to make this conforming. So with that, can we go through and take each of those four items line by line, just so that everyone here has an opportunity to question and make sure it's clear?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I don't, somebody has a copy, I did not take mine up, no, the notice, David, you have the notice? I need to get my glasses here, if you can also hand me my glasses, because all the age has set in. Thank you. There are ostensibly, the following variance relief is sought, to permit an accessory building height of 30 feet where the maximum permitted is 20. The removal of 38.3 of the trees on the property where the maximum permitted is 20, I would indicate that unless either Mr. Euro or Mr. Maskey can tell you that less trees can be removed in order to build, I would say that that one is a very difficult one to overcome in terms of a denial. The two-sided freestanding project identification sign with a 17 and a half square foot sign area per side and a height of six feet, four inches versus four feet and 20 square feet, you've heard my comments. And the fourth one is the landscape buffer requirements from internal parking areas to adjacent residential properties to the extent required by the board. The fifth one is the waiver of the tree mitigation, I would advise the board that that is not one that you can deny, because as I said, tree mitigation ordinances as they relate to inclusionary developments are basically ignored.
Okay, thank you. Can I open up to the board? Comments, questions?
So, I know a few of you have said it to yourselves, I'll say it on behalf of the board and the Township Committee, thank you for your candor, thank you for coming up and speaking your piece. I know it's not easy, I know it's not sitting, easy sitting here in front of this board, in front of attorneys, on camera, coming up with a microphone, and we appreciate it. I think we're all pretty sick over what transpired last month. We've, speaking for, you know, members of the Township Committee, I know, I know the mayor toured quite a bit of that area, got a chance to speak to people. We were here at the municipal building, dealing with the after effects, trying to find people supplies and clothing and essentials, because they had lost everything, and it was heartbreaking. It was actually a pretty, pretty sick irony, actually, that this application had to get deferred because of that storm. But now we're here, and we're back again. And I was really hopeful, maybe not hopeful. But when the storm transpired and we saw the devastation to the fact that, as noted, both the governor and the president had to be here, I thought there might be some common sense put into this process. I thought the judge might think, you know what, maybe, maybe we, we need to rethink this. Thought the applicant might actually think that. Be honest, I really did. We have, we have Fair Share Housing that not only fought us, against us when we denied this the first time, but they tried to penalize us for doing it. And now that they've seen the devastation, where are they? Why are they not here? Where's Adam? With all due respect, why is he not here? Hearing from the people here tonight. There are essentially two people that could fix this. Judge hasn't changed his mind, and apparently neither has the applicant, at least on a deferral or something to give us some opportunity to think about how we can make this better. So the issue of why we're still here runs pretty deep. The counselor tried to summarize it, but I'll put it in my own words. Affordable housing in the state is essentially a trump card. It is, you know, everything else is secondary. And that started with the State Supreme Court, and that has continued in the legislature, because no one has done a damn thing about it for 30 years. No one. And I'm sorry, I know someone came up and said how disappointed they were that the local government can't do anything. Fact of the matter is, they've taken home rule away from us. The fact that we're sitting here because we had to deny and then go back through a court hearing, no one, no one is of the mindset that maybe we should rethink some of this stuff. The only, the only, the only prevailing thought is, let's get that, all that building done so we can get our affordable housing in place, because that's what matters. And we're all in favor of affordable housing. This is not a rant against affordable housing, this is a rant against a process in which we have to put affordable housing in place. And the developers unfortunately get to take advantage of that, regardless of the implications, regardless. So whether or not we put conditions on the approval tonight, or whatever happens tonight, or, to me, it's not so much conditions, it's just an under, basic understanding about what, what's happening here. We've undertaken some work to try to figure out how we can make this better, to try to look at the pipe, to try to look at the basins, and figure out, is there something that can be done? That study is underway. Whether or not there's a remediation process that we can go through, that's not the, that's not the planning board's responsibility, with all due respect, you know, that's something that's going to fall to the Township Committee, and we'll undertake that responsibility when we get the findings from that, from that report, and figure out how we can make this I pray that we, none of you ever have to go through this again, because it's, what's happened over the last 20 years, it just has to, has to be changed at some point. And I can't imagine how you keep going through and living with this. I hoped we could impart some, some common sense, I think someone said maybe a little heart in it, too. It seems like we haven't, at least the fact that, you know, pushing to have an application that's got no changes, you heard, Counselor. If this ends up going through, we will continue to work to figure out how we make the situation That's all I can, all I can commit to you. I'm sorry, this is what you've had to go through. I wish this state was in a better place, that we could figure out a way to make affordable housing a more collaborative and community-oriented process, but it just continues to get rammed down our throat, and the fact that, that the courts don't even want to hear it gets pretty disheartening sometimes. So, thank you for coming out. Please don't think you haven't been hurt, because you have.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank. There isn't a person on this board that, over the last month after Ida, hasn't realized that when this day comes, how difficult it's going to be to sit here, after we saw the devastation that happened to your, to your side town and your homes. I don't think there's anybody here that, despite the water problems we may have had personally, can compare what, what issues you had, Jean, with your, your child fearing for a rainstorm, Amy, I visited your house shortly after, and your neighbors, Chris, love your passion in helping out your neighbors. One part about Hills Bros., we do help each other. Ken, even though you're not, you don't have a pony in the fight, that you, you speak up for your, for your people, your town. Sharon and Colleen and Angela and everyone else, even Maria, we've had difficult times together, but I, we appreciate what you said. This process is flawed, to understate it, it's been flawed for a long time. We have to live by the rules that's set and established by the state of New Jersey. But what I can promise you is, and Frank mentioned it, we started immediately since we saw the writing on the wall before Ida, that we need to look at this area, we've, we started the study on our dime. We weren't going to wait, and I wasn't going to wait for, unfortunately, it came too soon, for a storm to come and affect, affect you guys the way it did. We know there's an issue. I know there's an issue. I live in this town, I see all of you outside this building, and I don't want to have to, and I will never stop representing you until I'm off this dais. Your 96 homes are as important as the other 39,856 in this town. You need help. Frank and I and the Township Committee are committed to, despite this application, figure out a way to help you. We have some funds available that we, from the ARP. Mannville has some funds, the county has some funds, so we are committed with finding out a way to alleviate some of the pain that you have in this area, despite of what happens with this application going forward. But what I, I do want you to understand. But what I do want you to understand is that part of us still have to protect, and I know you don't want to hear it, the rest of the town, from having more applications put on us that we don't want necessarily, again, to restrict the building and the impervious and all this nonsense that we have to deal with. Our chairman's been on the planning board and committee much longer than I have, but I've been here long enough, over the 15 years, to see, you know, the writing on the wall, and we hear it, come in, stop the development, stop the development. Well, there's only certain things that we can do. Unfortunately, this is part of the purview that we are dealing with, and unfortunately, if this should go through, is another one that, with the New Jersey Supreme Court decision, takes the control out of our hands. But Mary Ann, I will promise you that I will continue to look into ways of protecting your development. Send me all the videos you want, I stave them all. Listen, Chris, I grew up in construction, there's nothing I'm going to see on your video here that I haven't heard before, I guarantee you that. I came to your development right after the storm, because I wanted to talk to you. I didn't hide, nor did any of my other fellow Republican, Democrat, doesn't matter, we're people first. We understand that there's a pain, and there's a suffering going on. So when this night is over, however it ends, just remember, please, take on my word, that it's not over. It's not over in any way, shape, or means that we are continuing to help you do what we can to alleviate the situation. And that's all I can promise you. Can't promise you that it's going to be a month, or a week, or six months, or two years, or whatever, but I promise you that we are focused and dedicated to helping you. And that's all I say.
Any more additional comments?
Yeah, I would just add, you know, Mayor Leponty, I'm glad you mentioned, you had started something before Ida, because while there were a lot of comments about Ida, I think Ida might be the camel that broke, you know, the storm or whatever, that broke the camel's back. But the camel's back was breaking far before Ida, right? With all these other storms over the years. So I'm glad action was being taken, and people can say, oh, Ida was a one-time thing, so just keep moving on. But, you know, you got to look at it, it's the history, more than just Ida. So I think that's the things to remember, and I think that's why the township committee's taking action, which is great. And I hope it's something that the applicant and their representation can take to heart as well, and hopefully do the right thing and work with us, work with Mannville, like the mayor said, and, you know, figure out a solution going forward. That's all, thank you.
Additional comments? Good job.
It is hard for people to do public speaking. It is difficult, so we do appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Chris, I did see all six videos, and, you know, that's the raw emotion that you get, and, you know, you sense the frustration, and it's really heartbreaking. Everybody's been pretty well, I'll say, has presented themselves well tonight, and, you know, we've heard your message, so whatever happens tonight, I also trust, like Ken just said, that the township committee will, and the township will go forward and take the steps to help remedy what the issues in the Green Hill development. Thanks again for coming out.
Just wanted to add one more point, and I missed it earlier. I'd like to thank Mayor Endurko for coming out, mainly because, obviously, this is something that he's dealt with quite a bit, but his advice is one that I would echo, that if you do have interest in Blue Acre Opportunities, please let us know. I know it's something that was raised when the governor was here, the mayor spoke directly to him about that. And if there's any way that we can provide funding to help assist in that, you know, that's another opportunity. I'm not asking you to, you know, leave your homes, but, you know, if it's something that is something of interest, please let us know, because it's something we're going to continue to push with the state.
So, yeah, I'm just going to kind of wrap things up. Thank you all for coming out, you know, echoing what everyone else was saying up here. These things are heard, don't you don't believe that the aides of the elected leaders up the chain, and I'm talking to our assembly members, that they don't take a peek at these things, or read the stories that are going to be printed about it? It's important to come out, and, you know, in numbers, as you did, because I do think, what I kind of thought was a little bit, you know, interesting, or ironic, was when the same, you know, when it was mentioned how we had the president and the governor here, and the governor, you know, I think missed the mark. I mean, yeah, yeah, he's part of the majority of the legislature, yeah. And as Deputy Mayor said, it sat for 30 years. He's the one right now in charge, the legislature. You know, they have the opportunity to do something today. I mean, when you have control of both branches of government in that aspect, you can get anything done, if you really want to do it, not punt it to the courts and let them do it, and just say, oh. So the other thing, obviously, we're in the midst of election season, there's an interesting ad I see out there by one of our assemblymen, who now wants to be our senator, and he talks about science and advocacy. My question to him is, we have the science, it's right in your face, I haven't seen any advocacy from him in the years of him being in the assembly to deal with this. So I guess my advice to everyone is, if you don't think politicians don't know who votes or not, they know. And that's about all I'm going to say, is exercise that right and don't let it go. This is not going to be a big turnout, but you guys make it a big turnout. So again, thank you guys tonight. I also thank our professionals, too, for guiding us tonight, continuing, you know, what has been one of the most unusual applications that we've had to deal with here. Like I said, this is the first time in nearly 20 years I've actually had something rejected, thrown back by the courts, told to fix it, and literally make the problem go away. So with that...
Mr. Chairman, may I ask for a five-minute recess?
Everyone in favor? I and Mike, we have five minutes. So we reconvene top of the hour?
Thank you.
Hillsborough, New Jersey, celebrating 250 years of a rich history.
Hi, I'm Mayor Sean Leponty, and I'm proud to showcase Hillsborough, one of the best places to live in America.
From preserved farms that help feed the world, to the Van De Veer House, to the John Arstot's House, restored and currently utilized for business, to the magnificent and world-famous Duke Farms...
Where you can walk or ride a bike through their historic grounds. To the iconic and machanic Reformed Church, and just down the road is our fabulous machanic mill located right on the picturesque Rowerton River.
You're invited to visit Hillsborough, a great place to live, work, play, and do business anytime, and experience over 250 years of proud history in Hillsborough, New Jersey.
Good morning, and welcome to the opening of the Peter J. Biondi Route 206 bypass, here in Hillsborough Township. Thank you for joining us here today for this very much anticipated event here. Can't think of one that we've been waiting for longer. As we open the remaining sections of this vital roadway, which has been named in memory of the late Assemblyman Peter J. Biondi. This roadway will officially open for traffic on Saturday, June 5th. I'm joined here today by my colleagues, the Hillsborough Township Committee, Deputy Mayor Frank Delkor, Committeeman Doug Thompson, Committeewoman Janine Erickson, and Committeeman Jeffrey Wright. I would also like to thank this opportunity to introduce some other guests here this morning. Senator Kip Bateman, who was a sponsor of the legislation to actually get this name, this road named after the late Assemblyman Biondi, and thank you for that. Assemblyman Roy Fryman, Commissioner Paul Drake, and please help me welcome Ms. Joan Thank you for being here today on this historic day for Hillsborough Township. The late Assemblyman Peter J. Biondi was a pillar in our community for over 35 years. As a result of time serving the community as a member of the township committee, mayor, freeholder, and assemblyman, he was often referred to as Mr. Hillsborough. During his entire tenure in public life, he remained committed to the betterment of Hillsborough. His tireless dedication and support of Hillsborough was unwavering, hence why in 2013, this roadway was officially named after Peter J. Biondi. The bypass is a vital part of Hillsborough's economic development. Not only will it bypass lessen congestion and traffic along the existing 206, but it will also serve as the impetus for a future town center that is envisioned in our township master plan. This long-awaited and much-anticipated vision is now a reality. Originally considered in the early 1970s, as the Hillsborough Township began to develop, unfortunately, it remained only a concept until the early 2000s. In August 2010, township local and state officials broke ground to officially start the construction of the bypass at midsection, somewhere where we're standing right now. We thank past and current state administrators for their diligence in seeing this project through. This portion will shift traffic on the new 3.6-mile section of US 206 to the east of the existing highway between Mountain View Road and Old Somerville Road, creating the opportunity for further development of the town center along the current 206. The project limits are from Mountain View Road to Hillsborough Road on the southern end, and from Animal Road, Somersdale County Route 514, to Old Somerville Road on the northern end. To the north, the widening will work, will continue until the final phase is complete. We have looked forward to this day, and we now look forward to the development of our downtown Hillsborough Main Street vision. Please stay tuned as we continue to grow and improve and remain as one of the best places to live and work in America. Again, thank you all for being here this morning. We will now have the official ribbon cutting, and that will conclude our ceremony. And again, thank you to our honored guests who are here today, and Ms. Joan Biondi, and thank you very much. One, two, three.
Hi, I'm Mayor Sean Leponty, and I'm proud to showcase Hillsborough, one of the best places to live in America.
From preserved farms that help feed the world, to the Van De Veer House, to the John Arstot's House, restored and currently utilized for business, to the magnificent and world-famous Duke Farms...
Where you can walk or ride a bike through their historic grounds. To the iconic and machanic Reformed Church, and just down the road is our fabulous machanic mill located right on the picturesque Rowerton River.
You're invited to visit Hillsborough, a great place to live, work, play, and do business anytime, and experience over 250 years of proud history in Hillsborough, New
Okay, we are back from recess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, based on all of the items, based unfortunately or unfortunately on his honor's decision and the situation at hand, we're seeking a motion to approve the application as produced before the board.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the application as remanded back to this board?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any last final comments from the dais? Okay, with that, a roll call, please.
Mr. Emmett? Before I vote, I just want to make some comments that I do have a lot of empathy and compassion for everyone here tonight, and the stories, they were extremely touching. I had denied this application based on principle, and I do feel as if my voice was stripped from me by this court order. And I do think that even if I did vote the way I feel I should, that this application is coming along, so I do hope that the township committee does act and help the residents, my fellow community members, and with that, I will vote to approve the application.
Mr. Chickereilly?
I also hope that the township, and maybe even the applicant, will take reasonable measures after this, but I will vote yes.
Mr. Astag?
Yes, I spoke before, and I also hope the right things get done here, and with that, I vote yes.
Mr. Senator Armida?
Because I know our township committee will do the right thing and follow through, I do vote yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes, I said my piece before, but the one last thing I'll note is, as councillor noted, whether we say yes or no, judge is going to say yes. And he'll say yes with us being in a worse place than we are today. So unfortunately, from a township perspective, having this approved and having other implications...
having this approved and having other implications is just not something that is something we can do. So as much as it pains me, I have to vote yes.
I'm going to vote yes, but there is no vote that I've made ever in my life that has been tougher than this vote, and just the most uncomfortable feeling I've had ever. And I don't know how to even express it, other than after the fact, as I told you before, is what I'm going to do from now on, on your side. But for this application, it's just yes.
Chair Saraji?
So much it pains me. One of the things I took great pride in during the time I was on the township committee and on this planning board, I was never told how to vote until this evening. So this yes vote is for you, Judge. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, on a procedural issue, a draft resolution was provided to Mr. Paula Castro that basically was the draft of the denial. I would ask him to please put his comments on it to me, so we can attempt to get this resolution before the board memorializing it as soon as possible.
Yeah, first of all, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and board members and your professionals. Is there a date, certain Mr. Bernstein, that you, we'll have that to you within...
I'm assuming we're looking...
Next week, for sure.
We're looking for the, probably the November...
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, so with that, just a reminder to the board that we do have a meeting next week, on the 14th. So again, as always, just let the planning office know if you're unable to attend. David, anything else? So with that, I will entertain a motion of adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, and we'll see everyone on the 14th. Good evening, everyone.